I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Abington Public Schools School Committee, tonight being Tuesday, May 26th, here at the Town Hall in the Carter Room. Everybody that's able, please rise for the seat to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And we read our Abington Public Schools' mission statement each evening, and we're going to ask our high school representative, Mr. Sam Alafronte, to read it for us tonight.
The mission of the Abington Public Schools is to provide all students with relevant, challenging educational experiences to prepare them to be engaged, responsible citizens, and members of the global community.
And we received correspondence on May 6th to myself and to Superintendent Schaefer from Mr. Paul Hagerty. Effective immediately, I am resigning my position on the Abington School Committee. Thank you, Paul Hagerty. Next, we have hearing of visitors. There are none. We move on to the reading and approval of records from April 28th. Everybody has their minutes.
I'm good with them.
So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of April 28th, 2015, as presented or amended.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
That's it. Next, we have our principal reports, and from the Frollo Middle School, we have Roseanne Karpowska.
Good evening. I would like to present on the program of studies, and then when I am done with the revisions to the program of studies that we're proposing, I'd like to introduce Mr. Atkinson, who wanted to present on the changes we recommend for these students. So with regard to the program studies, there's only one change that we would like to make this year, and that is to, without a change in any staffing, to take the math applications course that was offered for one trimester, six out of six days, or 60 classes, we would like to split that, or share the wealth, and split it into 30-day class, one trimester for 7th grade, and 30-day class, one trimester for 8th grade. And that way, we can offer some additional doubling up on math in both grade levels. So we'd like to make that one change, and then perhaps over time, as we increase, we're able to increase staff, we could expand upon it, but this would give us an opportunity to provide some doubling up on math concepts in both grades as needed.
What trimesters or trimester would that course offering, what trimester would that course offering be offered?
We actually, we're trying to get as many of the math apps classes into the first and second trimester next year deliberately, to get it in before MCAS testing.
Do you have a different curriculum for the 7th grade and for the 8th grade for this math application?
We do. It's tied to the actual grade 7th math curriculum and the grade 8th math curriculum, and it adjusts based upon what's needed.
So you're looking at differentiated instruction?
Yes, based upon what the students need. So if there's a particular concept that needs greater work, then this will give us the opportunity to do that in both grades versus right now, we have it only in the 7th grade.
Will more than one section be offered per each grade?
Yes.
Do we know how many, or is that based upon need?
Based upon scheduling, which is actually happening the rest of this week. Yes, Mrs. McDermott's going to ask them this week to start scheduling. So the number of sections do depend on how it all falls together, but we have, Mr. Atkinson teaches a math applications course, one period, and then Mr. Hill, who also teaches computers, teaches math applications as well.
But just to clarify, this is compulsory, so all 7th and all 8th graders will take it, as opposed to at the high school where people are elective, take one thing or another?
This is not an elective. This is compulsory.
Do you have a rough idea of how many students per class, or is that just another one based upon what your scheduling is going to be?
It is based upon, but these classes are generally, we don't have as many sections in some cases because of the amount of, the number of teachers that we have to teach the course, so they are larger classes, actually. They're around about 25 students, 25, 28 students.
And it's not leveled, right?
It's not leveled.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the revisions to the Frollo Middle Schools' program of studies for the 2015-16 school year as presented or amended this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
So next is the proposed revisions to the 2015-2016 Frollo Middle School Student Handbook.
With regard to the handbook, there's only one change we'd like to make, and I'm going to paraphrase, but the current handbook reads, "For a tardy dismissal or absence to be considered excused, all documentation regarding the absence must be received by the main office," excuse me, "within five days of the absence." I would like to make the change so that the new handbook would read, the parent guardian would need to notify the office within three days of the absence. So we're going from five-day notification to three.
I believe this is driven by Chapter 222, staying consistent with the new regulation.
I have no questions.
So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the 2015-2016 Frollo Middle School Student Handbook as presented or amended this evening.
Go move.
Second. Thank you.
Next, we have the Abington High School presentation, and first, we're going to have Principal Teresa Sullivan with the proposed revisions to the 2015-2016 Abington High School Student Handbook.
This is the school committee. I would like to make a presentation.
Sure.
You want to give the copies of the proposed language, language changes? This was for questions on the first one.
I have no questions.
We're being learned to reflect changes in future testing, so that's why we're doing that now. The proposed language for the parents and guardians and what they're encouraged and expected to do. Any questions on the added bullet of utilize the student parent portal to view students' progress? They have been doing this, and now we're going to be having it and writing a layout. The food and beverage policy, the proposed language, we cut it down by an hour from 9:15 to 8:15, and it coincides with our, the CPT time, common planning time, when students come in. Any questions on that? And the chemical health. So we are eliminating the possession language, otherwise known as the present side. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
Just when everyone was debating that in the, I guess, the school council meetings, was there a lot of discussion on it? Was there like a unanimous vote one way or the other, or?
Long and lengthy. Overall, it was about three months worth of rolling it out and discussing, asking questions, gathering data from the athletic directors as far as what other schools in our conference are doing. We're looking at like a 60-40 split in the conference. It was worthwhile discussion going back to the MIAA straight language.
And 60-40 split going?
With the conference. 60-40, with all of the schools in our conference.
Right.
About 60% of those schools have the language as stated, the MIAA language.
Okay.
Was any kind of survey done with the parents in the school?
Not that I'm aware of, no. The survey was done in the conference. A general email was given to the staff by myself and the two student representatives were speaking on behalf of the student body along with our student council, and no.
The topic was posted for how many months?
About three to four.
Three to four. And those minutes were also posted, so, and I know that probably more than any other topic that I've dealt with, this has been discussed. So I think, I know people were aware that you were discussing it at the school council level at the high school.
How long was the older, the current version of the language in there? How many years do we?
About, was it about eight?
Seven or eight, it was before three, it was only, yeah, on the town.
Actually, that language was in there when my daughter was in high school, and she is now 36.
Okay, more than eight. Getting back to the survey and the data, informally with myself, the students that I have asked, they like the plain and simple language. It offers no ambiguity, and it's cut and dry. And moving forward to the last one, the amendment, the academic integrity, we're just adding use, or the unauthorized use of electronic transators.
Just, I don't mean to be jumping around on people, just going back to the chemical health. I'm aware also that this was the unanimous recommendation of the school council at the high school.
Correct, yes.
Again, this is a topic that has been debated here in Abington and in many towns, and it's, you know, it comes down to how far do the parents that we serve want us reaching into their backyards on weekends? And so this is their recommendation that we don't, that we limit the scope of those investigations into chemical health to simple possession rather than constructive possession.
Those are the four proposed recommendations.
That includes the use of i-watches?
Yes, I'll shut them off.
Thank you.
Based on the discussion and all of the work that they, I feel responsible to you to give your recommendation. Because of the work that the school council and the high school administration has done with their parents at the school council level, and with their teachers and students, you know, I would support and I would recommend approval of this as presented.
So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the revisions to the Abington High Schools' 2015-16 Student Handbook as presented or amended this evening.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it with reservations.
Yeah. Next, we have the 2015-2016 Abington High School School Improvement Plan.
I'd like to thank my members of the school council who worked tirelessly, and all the decisions actually were usually how it works. We take a long time to make sure everybody's heard, a couple of students, even, and student representatives were very thoughtful and vocal also on all of our issues. So, other members, Susan Crowley, Peter Serino, Allison Gateley, Steve Maguire, Alicia Morando, Ellen Harris, and students Molly Atkinson and Nick Sideropoulos attended all of our meetings and participated in the voting, voting members. Ms. Sullivan attended, unfortunately is not a voting member. Review of, summary of our accomplishments from the last year, I know you'd asked for a summary, I'm not sure if you got a summary. Not part of the plan, but just a review of, you know, highlights of some of the things that we did accomplish from last year. What I did was I solicited comments from the staff and asked for the feedback on how they have reached every one of those goals in each of the indicators, and then summarized them and pick highlights rather than give you every single department's answer for every single thing that they did. I tracked their sexuality and summarized. So I think it's important to note that we're keeping our goals, and we thought that they were valuable goals, and we've made a lot of progress. Some of the highlights here, the science, technology, engineering department created common science lab rubrics and article review rubrics. We developed a common career research project with the English department, guidance department, and business department. We incorporated some sort of technology items like, and not every department did every single one of these, but interactive notebooks and blogging, the English department does a lot of that, media production, and others created YouTube channels, not using YouTube, but actually creating YouTube channels. Socrate and boot quizzes, something Health and Social Studies are using, and I know some of the English teachers are using the remind-me app. So those were some examples. The second goal of creating opportunities for metacognitive skills, and students to develop and reinforce those skills, I know that was a little bit of a debate last year, but our data did show us that our students struggle with strategies of how to learn. So, you know, it was easy at the high school level to say, well, they should have learned that, and push back, you know, back, and we realize that we really do need to take some of the time to teach those skills. Some of the things that we did, add the social expectation criteria to support in the art shows, the conscious performances, increased pre-writing strategies, and some of those were examples that the teachers gave, such as peer edits, turn and talk, self critiques. Several teachers incorporated retakes and redos, there's a lot of debate on that, but they did it as a pilot and worked through it and then presented that to the entire faculty, and others are buying in. Goal three, some of the data that we specifically had to look at based on our MCAS scores were special ed subgroup, and specifically, we weren't making much growth in math, and so we had to immediately respond and mediate some of our strategies to deliver the math curriculum. The ELA student growth percentile in MCAS and the post-specific DDM analysis, which went on all year, really, got us to the point in the spring of really understanding that reading comprehension was something our students, particularly inferential reading, nonfiction, that our students really struggled with. So that will continue, and strengthening the quality and increase the quantity of formative assessments across disciplines. So check-ins all the time, where are students, how much do they know before we're actually summaritively assessing them, but checking in with them and what they know. Several departments reported they were increasing. And the fourth goal, there were lots of, people reported how they were supporting programs and policies, so we picked a few of the highlights. I think the Abington High School Unified Athletic Team, where our special ed students are sponsored and supported by regular ed students, and just had their last game today. Play, I think they've only played rock, getting other teams together to play, thought that was a highlight. Staffing, Wave Week Wednesdays, that was a new, first for us last year, but being able to have the school open, cafeterias, the library, the media centers, where our students are working, they may be working diligently, they may just be gathering to talk, but breakfast is available, they may feel a collegial atmosphere, that they can be in the building and access tools, technology particularly. And then the, although the distracted driving simulation was snowed out for a couple of days, the kids that did experience that thought that it was pretty beneficial. So a couple of the highlights from last year. Move to our goals, I think I'm familiar with the mission statements, I said on page eight, the goals are the same as the last year, but the, obviously, the strategies and the activities are different.
Just a quick comment on page eight. Could you just put that into a table, into a tab, into a table form, as opposed to?
Page eight. Page eight, sure.
Page eight, table form, please.
Yes, okay.
In other words, in other words, something, a table, like?
Okay, the table follows next, right, page nine?
Right, but I want to also have these individual goals in a table form as well. Thank you.
Page nine, the improving the student performance and acquisition of content knowledge, our activities, the first one, the curriculum design, actually, that's a pretty hefty goal for all of the courses to be, and guides to be complete in a year, but we think it's that important, and it is there, number one, for a reason. But that's what we're going to spend most of our professional development time doing, updating our curriculum, aligning it with the Common Core State Standards, the frameworks in Massachusetts. Some areas are closer than others, but because there are so many different academic disciplines, we need to make sure that's a top priority.
What areas would you consider being closest to being completed?
Probably ELA is probably the closest. And I would say, you know, art has always been a leader, but it's very different when, you know, if, for example, it's maybe two or three classes in one department for one grade level, and others, you know, for example, social studies, they have a lot of electives, there's a lot of classes that they're offering, so there's a lot more for them to do.
So would social studies be considered the one that needs the most work to be completed, or?
No, I think comparatively, it's the number of courses that each of them own, so I don't think, I would say probably art needs the least amount of work, but also the art has been the least to change, so there haven't been any new art courses proposed in a long time versus we've had three, four, five different electives and social studies that we've been offering. So every time you propose an elective, yes, you're writing curriculum, but to keep that updated with the mass frameworks, you don't, didn't want to discourage new courses, but that comes with a lot of writing to keep up. So back to the reading comprehension, because we just identified this in the spring, really, as one of our weaknesses, we want to spend a lot more time on, sort of spreading the wealth around reading comprehension, coming up with a common rubric, you know, for NEAS, we had numerous common rubrics, writing, speaking, listening, math problem solving, but we didn't have one for reading, and we think that that might be something that will help so that the English department feels, doesn't feel like they own reading comprehension, you know, that we all are teachers of reading, we all are teachers of writing, so we should all be teachers of reading, and how can we do that? So we want to make this a school-wide, some, school-wide professional development work. Again, we want to work on the summer reading program that has some weight, and we have been struggling with, other than supporting reading, but really trying to find ways to assess reading and integrate it into our program as students come in in September. And I know every level has different ways to do that, and we determined, because we couldn't come up with a consensus, that we want to have a study group to work at, how can we make this happen for all students, or should we make it happen for all students? We worked closely with the library, in Deb Grimmett, we've had, you know, whole school reads, we've had book talks, you know, we've tried different avenues, but we don't feel like we've really honed in on one particular way to make summer reading part of the program. Emerging technology, that was there also last year, I think that may always be there because technology's always emerging and different, but we've made sure we want to get away from, not the idea that students are using technology to present and demonstrate, like a PowerPoint, but that they are creating in technology. Supporting opportunities for students to participate in global learning, I think Sam's going to talk about that also, we're going to be also promoting another trip next year, so we'll talk about that. Integrating opportunities for students to apply mathematical reasoning into problem solving and analysis into lessons across disciplines, that should have an S, but again, this is the same idea that it's very easy to get autonomous at the high school level, I'm a teacher of math, that's what I do, you don't do that, but when we recognize that our school improvement goals and our assessment, our report cards, so to speak, recognizes that math is a struggle, then how can we in other areas support students' math goals and math growth? So that's what we'd like to do, demonstrate that and make that across all disciplines. Integrate opportunities for students to construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. Persuasive essay and argument is one of the newest, heaviest weighted standards in the Common Core State Standards, so we know that we should focus there, and our student initial data shows that that has been a weakness also. Goal two, metacognitive skills, we've narrowed this down, I think we had eight last year, we narrowed it down to three, using student data and using the department head's input. And we're going to ask students to incorporate strategies into their responses, but we have to ask teachers to integrate strategies into their lessons, such as graphic organizers, agendas, outlines, flashcards, monics, et cetera, so that students understand how they learn and use, differentiate what works for them. Developing pilot freshman transition high school course, there's a lot of discussion at school council, actually over the last couple of years, about transitioning freshmen into the high school responsibility role, and we think we may have to do it a little more formally, in addition to an orientation program, in addition to guidance counseling, but maybe we actually need to develop some sort of course, whether it be a one credit, a once a week, a term, so we want a committee to look at that, that's what we hope to do next year. So maybe we'll come back and make that proposal in the program studies. Coordinate interdisciplinary meetings to share metacognitive strategies. What we're finding is what might work in the math department for math students, that also might work in the history department, or English department, or art department, but we haven't had that time to actually discuss that with each other, so we'll make sure that we find that time and incorporate that time into our planning.
Just quickly going back to the freshman orientation, do other schools in our area have a course that would initiate freshmen into the high schools?
Schools have freshman academies, ways to keep freshmen sort of separate, almost teaming models, almost like a middle school kind of model, that's, but they're the most common one that I've seen. I haven't figured out a way that we could do that with our staffing. We have a lot of shared staff still, part-time staff, makes that, makes the scheduling very difficult. We offer one section of band, period seven, I mean, it'd be difficult to navigate that, so barring that, I think there is some responsibility to look at the needs of freshman transitioning. I don't know if that's going to be the answer, but we will want to spend some time looking at that and studying that.
Okay.
Maybe make a proposal in the program studies.
Thank you.
Still using goal three, same, same goal, using student performance data to inform program policy and staffing. Now that we have common planning time in our schedule, we want to use some of that to coordinate some vertical team meetings. It may be difficult because we don't have the same kind of schedule with the Frollo, but we need to look at release time and providing staff time to work 7 to 12. So that's something we want to talk about, maybe we do in professional development already, schedule time. Use the DDMs, the WITA access scores, the MCAS results to write educated student growth goals. We want to make sure that our teachers are looking at the student assessment data before they write their goals. Identify subgroups at risk, the state does that for us, but I think we know, you know, that we have subgroups that are at risk, we know that our low-income subgroups are struggling, our special education groups, and our ELL students, and provide some intervention, things like the math intervention that we did this year, whether it be providing students extra time in the day, extra math, sort of similar to what, you know, the Frollo was trying to do also. And the college board is no longer offering the PSATs on Saturdays, so we have no choice. Other schools have, you know, for years, provided that during the school day, we have, we have not, but we don't have a choice anymore, at least for next year, so the PSATs will only be offered on Wednesday, I think it's October 14. We want to make sure that all of our students are accessing the PSAT, and we will provide it, and we will proctor it, so that they have that practice for their SATs. Also provides us some data to use. And the last goal, also primed down the activities here, but certainly not, not at all the value, but supporting programs that maintain a safe and substance-free, tolerant, respectful environment. Obviously, the school building committee efforts to secure a facility that is a safe, you know, environment, continue to work hard on that, and the, we've had SST student support team meetings with both the Frollo and the high school administration, guidance, nursing staff, school psychologists, looking at this program, the signs of suicide, and want to spend the year training staff, perhaps in and want to spend the year training staff, perhaps integrating to the, into the health curriculum. If that's the case, we'll come back to you with the program of studies, talk to you about that.
So that's some, the second, was that something that you would need to do continuously on a yearly basis, every year, or?
The Signs of Suicide, training?
Yeah.
Not sure, I think this is off where to look at it. We just got the one who sent a few people to, to the training, and the rest of us haven't been trained. I don't know if, I think, I have a feeling that if we have trained staff, you know, they'll be the train, the trainers.
Okay.
I have a question. On page seven, number 21, what's steampunk?
Steampunk was an art program. We had an artist, this local guy from Canton, I believe, he came to the school. He actually came, rather than us go to, he has a museum that he promotes. But to take students there, you can only take a few at a time, and people come. So I think the, I think it was the AEF funded a grant for him to come to us. So our students, he gave a presentation, basically a workshop, sent kids to the cafeteria also. So he did both, applied to a workshop. Kids loved it, but that's, you know, sort of an antique item that they can make modern technology out of. An old telephone, one of those dial-up, you know, to make something art.
Groove, what's it, Groove, Goldberg?
Yes.
Type machine?
And then, sort of in line with what we were talking about with the freshman transition, I know in Rockland, for the seniors, they do something their last few days of school, sort of getting them ready for college or the real world, where they learn how to maybe change attire, things like that. Have we ever thought about doing anything like that?
Not done yet.
No?
Miss Daisy's new class?
She has a senior seminar, and the students have, it's piloting, the student seminar, senior seminar.
Yeah, it's similar, she like teaches them how to cook a little bit.
She make you change tire?
Can you change your tire?
I did that in accounting class.
I don't know, I just, I was hearing some of the stuff that they're doing in Rockland. Some of it had to do with, you know, safety on campus, how to fill out a application for a loan, writing a check, things like that.
Yeah, I know we have, certainly have finance, personal finance, you know, classes that would do, you know, but not everybody takes that, you know, you might make it a mandate for all seniors. It's not something that I've investigated or put in the program of studies, who would staff it?
Catherine, anything else?
Any?
No?
Oh, and then on the student council, they're elected as juniors? School council, I mean, sorry.
Yes.
And then they serve the two years?
We've never, we actually had three serve before at a time. I know that we have, I suppose you probably don't want to overwhelm by students voting, but we only have to have one student. I like having more students, so we open it up. And they have a lot of conflicts also sometimes, with athletics or drawing. We have a little one on the committee.
So no motion needed on that? Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to skip around a little bit and sort of stay on the Abbott and High School. And Sam is going to present on the trip to Europe, if he's outside. Yeah?
Try to stay here. All right, you've got a microphone right there, that's why. All right, so we went to London, Paris, Boulogne, La Serne, Barre, Liechtenstein, Munich, and Dachau. So this is us, right before we left. And then this is us in the airport. The picture in the middle to the right, that was a couple AP students who had to get ready for the AP exam when they came back. So we had a little, we had a little bit of work going on in the airport. This was our first and second day in London. We took a cruise down the Thames River, and we saw the Globe Theater. We went to dinner in a little like, just a little like pub kind of. And that's us at dinner. And then the next day, we actually went on the London Eye, which is the Ferris wheel in the background. That was really cool. After that, we had a little, we had a little bit of free time where we could walk around from near the National Gallery. And there was like street performers all over the place. And in the free time, I think Nick Sideropoulos and Taylor Johnson, they actually saw the Queen of England. So that was cool. We were, a bunch of us were standing pretty close, we were like a quarter mile away. And there was, there was a bunch of police officers, and we weren't kind of like questioning why. They were all, they like blocking the street off with their bikes and stuff, and we were wondering why. And I guess that's why, so they were only like 50 feet away from her, which is cool. These are more pictures. We went to Big Ben, we saw the changing of the gods. Our tour guide was actually awesome. He, he got us like on time for everywhere, he knew the subway's great, and we, we got everything on time, it was awesome. Some more pictures, went to St. Paul Cathedral, Buckingham Palace, the Tower Bridge. Need some more pictures. We definitely weren't shy there. And then we took a train the next day to Paris, and we went to the Louvre. We went to that, the church, the cathedral. And it was a beauty, the weather was awesome. It was like 75 degrees and sunny every single day, which we lucked out. That night, that night in the top right, we went to like a pizza shop in France. It was, it was different, but it was good. The next day, we went to the Eiffel Tower, and we went to Notre Dame Cathedral. We actually had a couple hours of free time, and we got, a couple of us got ice cream, and it was, we kind of just walked around, went to the shops, and got lunch by ourselves. And then we met back together and went to dinner. These are kind of just some pictures. And I think that's from inside Notre Dame Cathedral, their rose window. Some more pictures of me and Pete getting some crepes in France. And then, so, and then we went to, in the Louvre, we, some people didn't actually walk around the whole time, just because it's, it's very crowded. There's, yeah, there's thousands of people there, and the place is absolutely huge. You get lost if you don't. Ms. Luca actually went prior, when she went with EF, so she kind of knew her way around a little bit. So she took us to like the Mona Lisa, the Great Sphinx, and all the main attractions, but if we weren't with her, it would have been interesting. And then we actually took a riverboat cruise that night, too. And it was like, I think we took it about eight o'clock, and it was about an hour. And that was cool, because we got to see the city from a different perspective than what we had earlier in the day. These are some local cuisines. The top right is from, I believe we had that in Germany. And then everywhere else was just places we went in France. Some people went to other places, not everyone went, but. And then the next day, we had a long bus ride. I was sleeping most of the time, so I really don't, we, it was through the Alps, it was probably beautiful. But it was a, it was like a 10 or 12-hour bus ride, we were on the bus. We stopped for lunch in, in France, and we all got pizza and stuff, which was cool. And then we got back on and went. Switzerland was, I thought it was my favorite country. We went, we were at a, we actually stayed at a different hotel than we originally planned. And it was a little bit outside the city, but it was in like a small little town, which was cool, we could walk around at night. But the next day in Switzerland, we went to the top of Mount Pilatus, which was awesome. It was a, that's the top right picture. It was beautiful up there, you could see like, you could see for miles, it was awesome. Some more pictures from up the top. Yeah, and then after we got down from Mount Pilatus, we went to, we went into La Serne, and we had a bunch of free time, we had a couple hours, there's not too much to do. So we went to a couple, the, we went to shops, we stopped at this, the lion, I'm not positive what it was actually called. But it's a lion carved into the side of like a brick, I mean, a rock face. And we took pictures and stuff there. More pictures from La Serne. And then the next day, we went to, we went to Germany, and we went to Neu, that's, that's Haas. Went to a different castle. It's, I can't really pronounce it. It's the picture on the right, top right. It's actually the castle that they designed Cinderella's castle after. So it was made in the 1800s, but it was designed to look like it was made in like the 15th century. So it was, it was cool. It was, okay, and then, the castle was actually like, probably a mile and a half up on the side of a mountain. So we had to, we had to climb up there, and it was, it was, it was fun. I think everyone definitely had fun going. We, it was in like, it was right next to a little town, and they had shops in the town, and it was a cool day, cool experience. That's actually the castle right there. The next day, we went to Dachau, and this was definitely the most moving place we went to. It was a, it was a really unbelievable experience. And definitely, if you get the opportunity to go to a concentration camp, definitely do it. It was, it just really puts in perspective how like lucky we are here, and how terrible this incident was. And then we went to Munich after we visited Dachau for a couple hours. We took a bus tour, and our tour guide was good there. And we actually stopped at a couple places. The picture in the middle, they had a, it was a river, and they have these machines underneath the water, and it allows people like surf in the, in the river. So we stopped and watched them for a couple, a couple minutes. And then we went to a couple cathedrals, and a couple other places. Pictures in Germany. And that, the picture on the top right is the Nazi decor. And it's one of the only places that still has the swatch sticker. But it's Hitler, when Hitler was designing this building, he put it, it's, he made like the swatch sticker into like a design, so they couldn't really tell that it was that. And the only reason why this building survived is because they had grass growing on the top. So when the planes were flying over, they wouldn't drop bombs on it, because they didn't think it was a building. So that's one of the main reasons why it is still standing. This is some parent feedback. Leave it up there for a minute, so you guys can all read it. I think that's it. And I just want to say that it was definitely a very cool opportunity, and I definitely suggest you guys approving another trip next year or in future years. There, we had absolutely no problems at all. It was, it was awesome. It was definitely the coolest experience that all of us have had, and I think everyone can say that. And I think the council had fun, too. So it was a good time.
Did you miss your cellphone?
Yeah, you, a lot of places actually had Wi-Fi, so you could connect and get like iMessages. But some places didn't. One of the hotels actually didn't, which kind of stunk, but.
The Twitter was really nice.
Yeah.
The fact that you could log on and see what was going on.
Yeah, because Ms. Luca was, I think she actually bought the data plan, so she was updating like Twitter, so the parents could see that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to read, this was the letter that Teresa Sullivan sent out to all the students. Dear student, welcome home and congratulations on completing a successful international field trip. I am thrilled that Abbott and High School students and teachers were able to travel to Europe over vacation and experience both culture and history of several countries that can only be truly understood through an immersive experience. I love being able to live vicariously through you as your chaperones tweeted and texted along your route. I am told that each of you consistently demonstrated qualities of outstanding travelers, students, and citizens. Your experience and behavior will serve as a model for future AHS global travel. I sincerely hope that this was a profound educational experience for each of you. I look forward to the production of your video. Sincerely, Teresa Sullivan, principal.
Good job, Sam.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. So segueing into that, the next item is the consideration of an international field trip in February of 2016 for a high school.
So in your, in your packet, under my section, I've included the, the form that you've seen in the past describing the, the chaperones, the intended destinations with an optional day, depending on time, to Morocco. The dates, you'll see it's over the February vacation period. The ratio of chaperones to students. You know, then there's additional detail attached to that form about the company, which is the same company that was used for this previous trip. And I know that we have our high school people here who would help me answer any questions, people might have.
What was the ratio of juniors and seniors this year that took the trip?
Like 5.3 to 1.
Will those juniors still have the same opportunity to take the trip this coming year, for a second trip up there?
Would priority be to students who had not traveled before? Are these the same teachers that took them, that were on there?
Some of them are. Probably, you know, thank, since Mr. Serena was here, Mrs. Daisy, Mrs. Luca, Mr. Holtzman, and Mr. Serena, who took the, you know, the students on their trip. Mrs. Daisy and Mrs. Luca would go again. The new chaperones, Mrs. Casey and Mr. Scott, perhaps, Mr. Lewis. If they added more students, they would have to add more chaperones. These are the people that have volunteered, that can make themselves available to go. I think the other thing is, it's a different season, which might make a difference whether students are playing winter sport, for example, so it does attract, you know, other kids may have chosen not to go for a particular, because they had other commitments, this might open it up to different students, because it is a different season.
Thank you. Where this is in February, is there extra insurance because of weather, or?
Yeah, I know EF has insurance, they do this all the time. They've been in the business for years and years and years. Some people sending several trips in February, some are sending, some schools send several in April, and some do both. But I'm not familiar with the insurance exactly.
And the ratio of students to chaperones, can we change that to no greater than 7.0 to 1?
I think that's the EF policy.
So that's directly from there? So they have a policy that says 6.1 or 7.7, 6 to 1 or 7 to 1?
Might be 6, but for every 6 students, a chaperone goes for free. But if you don't have that 6, then you can't, so if you ask for 7, then when students back out or can't go for some reason, you'd end up with 6. And I think we ended up with 5.3 or something, less than 6, we ended up with.
What was the ratio this year?
It was like 5.3 to 1.
5.3 to 1. And that was-
Because we went with the same plan, like you, you know, so you're soliciting students, they sign up, but some students back out, or change their mind, and you want to make sure you absolutely have the 6 to 1.
So can I just clarify a question I asked before? You said it was 5.3 to 1 ratio of chaperones to students. How many seniors went and- How many seniors went and how many juniors went?
It was more seniors. It was probably, what, 29 people went? Is that what it was? So it was probably about 20 to 9, I think. It was definitely, definitely more seniors.
20 seniors and 9 juniors, is that it?
It was pretty close, right? Yeah. Definitely more seniors went this year.
Do see on here, on the form, it says cancellation trip insurance.
Yeah.
Which would apply in terms of a storm in February. But we're not going to have any next year.
That's right, because we're trying to build a school.
When we talk to the company that provides us, there are all kinds of reasons for cancellation and a need for an individual family. The family may have a crisis in their family, there may be a weather event, there could be something going on in the world, but the State Department needs to help us make different plans. So their cancellation policy covers all those things, but you don't get into it until you read and you give your money and then you know what you're getting into and you
Are they planning to do fundraising for this trip? Or are the kids, probably not. That didn't work out.
One of the reasons you're asking now about this is so that, you know, you can't, without knowing for sure that the school committee would approve something like this, you can't start promoting it. And so kids can't start asking family members to help them pay or work for this type of trip. So the sooner you know what the answer is yes or no, the sooner the kids that want to go can start working over the summer or they can decide that this is what I want for my birthday present, you know, help toward this from a relative.
I think it'll be, it'll be a very good trip, but I guess I still, I just still question if someone can just point me in the direction where the 6 to 1 and 7 to 1 comes from their, their brochure, their requirements. I guess I just don't see it.
I don't know if I have it here. What are you looking for?
I mean, you had said that it comes from, from, from there.
It's about the payment for the chaperone. So if 6, I believe, if 6 students go, 1 chaperone goes, paid.
Okay.
So that, I think that's not so much. They also provide tour guides over there, there's adults they provide as well. In addition to our people, we also sent a nurse.
I was just going to ask that. Would be the same nurse that went this past time?
Not necessarily. It's voluntary.
Right.
Are you looking for a lower?
No, I'm just looking, I mean, Principal Sullivan has said it came from, from their, from their documentation.
If you have this many students, we'll let you, we'll give you a chaperone.
Right. And I was just looking for, I was just looking. Right, I understand, but I was just looking for that specific documentation that stated that, that's all.
We could find, we could find that documentation from the company and provide it to you.
That'd be great.
Even if you didn't, what, I mean, I guess what do you look, do you want more, do you want less? Do you want, I don't think we have.
I don't want more. No, I mean, I think 7 to 1 is more, is as high as I'd ever want to go.
So if you were comfortable with 7 to 1, you, you know, you would be asked for a motion to approve this based on what's presented, which is 7 to 1. And then we could find?
Yeah, I'd approve the motion. I'm just looking for that specific documentation, that's all.
As long as he's at EF paying, we're good.
Anybody else? So, consideration of an international field trip to Europe in February 2016, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the international field trip for juniors and seniors who meet the criteria as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks again, Sam. Next, we have report of the subcommittees. On April 29th, 2015, we had the MASC Day on the Hill, attended by Kathy Bailey and Mike Karowski and Superintendent Schaefer.
I just have a couple prepared remarks and then I'll let, turn it over to Kathy if that's okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Basically Peter and I had spent most, most of the day in Senator Keenan's office and personally to thank Senator Keenan for allowing us to spend an hour with him. He's very busy. You know, to spend an hour with us, I think was a great effort on his part to do that and again, thank him. Basically during our meeting, both Peter and I discussed the state budget, park and a little bit of Common Core. The good news is this year's budget that Governor Baker proposed, that the House proposed and that the Senate proposed increases Chapter 7 funding, Chapter 70 funding, increases general local aid, so that's good news to the schools. I did comment though, that if any additional positive changes occurred in these areas to make sure that something wasn't taken away from other areas, because then it would just be essentially be an offset. So we discussed that in length. At that time, the Senate wasn't in session. I believe the Senate right now is debating the budget as we speak. And I think they're going to go to House and Senate committees shortly, I believe. So, we also discussed the, the costs of vocational education and how these costs impact local school districts and how these costs have less, how we can get these costs to have less impact, you know, to the local districts in the future. And that's really, we spent an hour basically talking, those main talking points. I don't know, Peter, if you want to add anything to that?
No, I appreciate that you went, that you both went. We had to divide and conquer because we were able to cover two different meetings at the same time. So, thank you for that.
That really did make a difference because I was able to stay at the meeting that MASC held and they brought in the head of the Ways and Means, they brought in the chair, co-chairs of the Joint Education Committee. So it gave us and a number of other people that gave me an opportunity to take a look at what was going on, what the votes were, what things they were considering of importance. And basically, MASC is our voice with the legislature. It gives us a lot more power to see that the things that we feel are important are addressed. So it was nice to have Mike come along this year so that we could, could divide and didn't have to miss out on any of the information that was being delivered. Then we got to experience a fire drill at the State House, which was quite interesting as well. So.
Yes, unfortunately it wasn't raining out, which was good.
So it was a very interesting day and I think a very worthwhile day. We were able to get a lot of information and share a lot of information.
Thank you both. Happy birthday.
So the policy review and update subcommittee is also met several times. In your packet, I'm going to turn this over to Kathy, but in your packet, you have sections A and B from those meetings with Kathy and former member Paul Haggerty and Jim Hardy with MASC. So the plan is to provide these to you and then next month, I would request that you would consider approving these in form, which means that, you know, answer any questions you have or we can, we can delay it for another month. But if people are comfortable and we've answered your questions on these, then there are more policies coming after this as we continue the entire review process. And then what I'd be asking is the committee, when the committee's ready, approve these in form, which means that these will be the policies when we do all of the policy work all at once, all together. There'll be one motion at the end, hopefully in October, November of the next school year and that, then all of the old policies will be replaced. So the current policies that you've previously approved are in place to approve all of these at once at the end. And then we take them a piece at a time because as you can see, this is a multiple page, multiple policy packet. And this is just A and B.
We're looking at bringing approximately two sections to you at a time because there's so much information in all of them. And the reason for voting them in form as we go through them is to give you the opportunity to review them, but also to make sure that our policy handbook is one piece. So we don't have pieces from our revisions and pieces from the old policies. What you have in front of you today are sections A and B. A, you have not seen before, so there's a good deal of information in here that you will probably want to review. Section B is actually the section that was approved in, in the fall. There are no substantive changes to section B from what you approved in the fall, but there are some wording changes, so you may want to, want to review that a little quickly. But the section A is entirely new. We have not brought that before the committee before. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. If you have any questions now, I'll see if I can answer them for you if you want to ask questions next time. One of the things in our section B, policy section that you adopted in the fall, said that we would give you, first time we brought it to you would be for a reading. So this is, this is your first reading of these two sections.
So if we have any comments or changes that we would like to see, we should get them to you as soon as possible, because I believe the June meeting is just around the corner.
It is right around the corner. But it doesn't, I mean, the June meeting, we're scheduled to look at two more, two more sections, so you don't have to come up with any questions or comments that quickly. We can, until these are voted in form, you can make any, request any changes or any questions until we vote, vote it in form. So you've got actually until our next meeting.
And what you have is the recommendation of the policy. What you have in this packet is the recommendation of the policy subcommittee and so that each piece becomes, comes before the full committee, obviously before it becomes policy.
And your next meeting is next week sometime, right?
It is next week, but I've got so many meetings at Mike Hillander, I can't tell you which one is on.
Which day?
It says it on a day stream.
Between the building committee and?
It's June, it's June 1st, Monday, June 1st.
Oh yes, it's on our, it's on here.
So no motion?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay.
Under, under my section, we have a request from North River Collaborative. And in your packet, just an email from the collaborative asking the committee to make an appointment to the North River Collaborative Board of Directors. Kathy has served in that capacity in the past with North River.
So we'd be looking for a motion to appoint Kathy Bailey to the North River Collaborative Board of Directors for the 2015-2016 school year, if she's still willing.
Yes, I am willing to continue.
I'll make that motion.
I guess I have to second it.
Thank you.
Under dates to remember, Friday, May 29th is the senior reception, receiving line at 4:30 at Abington High School, 4:30 PM, obviously. On Monday, June 1st, policy review and update subcommittee at the North School at 8 AM. On June 4th is the senior awards night in the Abington High School gymnasium at 7 PM. On June 5th, we have the senior picnic at Abington High School, 11:15 AM. On June 6th is the Abington High School graduation at 10 AM. On June 8th, we have the Abington Town Meeting at 7 PM. And on June 10th, we have the underclass awards at Abington High School at 7:30 AM.
Next, we have a report of the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, Dr. Thomas.
Good evening, thanks. Before I start, I just want to say thank you and congratulations to all the kids that were on the unified kickball team today. The game's great. Sam, I know you weren't able to do the game, but the kids did a great job. Then they had a big pizza party and all the teacher volunteers, all the kids. It was, it's really special that Abington really has supported this the way they have. So that's definitely a special congratulations to all of them. The other piece is, this is the book that our, if you're interested in the book, that our leaders are reading this year, our curriculum leaders within the district. It's more of a fun book. Sometimes we've read some really heavy like curriculum in different types of areas, but this one is more about how to motivate and inspire your team with all the initiatives coming from the state. So that's something that they're going to be reading this summer for some leisure reading, let's hope. The other piece is, we have two informational items on the agenda tonight. One is professional development. So we've had a productive year. We've done a variety of professional development this year. However, the big items that our curriculum and Professional Development Council has covered is really updating our handbook on curriculum review cycle, which is a big undertaking. And so I want to thank the department heads, the directors for all their hard work in their area. Also updating the instructional materials forums as we're able to purchase new textbooks and new types of resources to align with our curriculum. It's important that we're really analyzing those types of resources. So that form is also, and it's forms, there's many pieces to it. Our rounds program was productive this year. A lot of staff were in and out of each other's classrooms. All buildings participated, at least in three particular scheduled rounds this year. So that was a positive for that movement. And then continuing the alignment with the Common Course State Standards, vertical and horizontal alignment of curriculum and lessons. As you heard, Principal Sullivan speak from the high school, this is a big push for next year. We've been aligning, but we still have a ways to go in this area. So that is going to be usage of our professional development time a lot next year. However, with that being said, we also may have to shift depending upon the outcome of the park decision because if that does go to park from MCAS, then we're really going to have to also shift, you know, our training with staff and with students as well. And then the last piece is also continuing the focus on assessments as well. We started that this year and we want to continue that into next year and really get the curriculum piece underway and then also through assessments with formative and summative and ongoing informal and formal assessments. So that will also continue. And then some of the other things that pop up, which we have to provide, they're unfunded mandates such as the signs of suicide, there is suicide prevention training that's now expected to be done, but we're still waiting to see if that's going to roll out similar to other initiatives where everybody has to be trained or is a core group like a crisis team members or things of that sort. So there will be things that pop up that you also have to do, but our real focus is going to be in the curriculum area. And our second item is the Joint Labor Management Committee. This was our second year, it was another successful year. I wanted to say a special thank you to our administrative team as well as the Abington Education Association because it has been very collaborative and considering the amount of time and energy and work that goes into this, it, it could go other ways versus collaborative ways. But I do want to say that this is a very productive working group. We got a lot done and it really helps with the whole educator evaluation process. And so the efforts this year, we're really focusing on, of course, negotiations we're also in as well, so that was a piece. And then the real big focus was district determined measures. So that whole piece with scoring and guidelines and really pulling that together and thanks to Jay Scott as well as Meg Doherty and Shari Fedorowicz who really took on that subcommittee in collaboration with AAA representatives to really kind of work out what the pilot should be. And then we're going to roll that out next year because the year after is when all the ratings and things of that sort will be actually expected to be uploaded to the state. Baseline Edge was also, of course, it's in the second year as well and there are some challenges with it, but there are some challenges with every type of technology platform. And so we're still trying to really hone in on effective and efficient ways to get the evaluation process complete. So it's been good, good year, productive year. Any questions on those two items? Any questions on those two items?
Nope.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. At some point, we need to send a text message. I don't know when that might be.
I can do it.
I don't know. It might be getting close.
A report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, Felicia.
Thank you. My first item is the update on the school building committee. I feel like every month I talk about how much work has been done over the past month and this month is no different. Over the last month, our 60% design development was completed and those plans were submitted to the Mass School Building Authority for review and comment. And that's a big milestone in the project. The next big milestone is in July when the 90% design documents are submitted to the school building authority for review and then the final construction documents. Along with, along with the design documents include cost estimations and we are continuously on budget, so that's good. The cost of construction is increasing, so it's good that we'll be going out to bid soon, until the end of the fall. In addition, the other big thing that's happening right now in terms of the building project is last, a week and a half ago, requests for qualifications were due for all the filed subbits, subbid categories. And there are 16 filed subbid categories. And over 100 packets of qualifications were submitted to the school building committee for review. And there's a committee of four of us that are reviewing those thousands of pages, but those 100-plus applications. And included in that are reference checks and bond ability to get payment bonds. And then once those companies are qualified, they are then invited to bid on the project. So this was the only time that there's truly a public bidding opportunity. It's public qualifications. These companies get qualified to bid and then once the bidding packets are complete, they will be invited to provide a bid for the project. And we continue to have our working group meetings and continue to develop different areas in the building, specific areas in the building. For example, last week, we talked a lot about the HVAC system, talking about window systems, talking about egress and electronic doors and security systems, camera locations. So really getting to the kind of nitty-gritty business of the project.
Well, you pretty much covered it.
Okay. It's a very, very exciting time and it's a lot of work for a lot of people, so.
It's very, very interesting as well, the minute detail that you get down to.
Since I missed the very beginning, do we still anticipate first shovel on the ground in January or?
Yes.
Thank you.
Still on track. We're on schedule, still planned, we're on budget. My second item is the FY '16 budget that we're reviewing.
Yeah, I'm just going to say a couple of words and then I'll turn it over to Peter and yourself. So basically, a lot of hard work has taken place through meetings over the past several months between the administration, the budget Subcommittee, and members of the Town Finance Committee as well. As a result, the 15-16 school budget represents another fiscally responsible budget that builds on previous year's budgets, but more importantly, builds towards the future year's budgets as we build and put online a brand-new middle high school. And I think that's, it's been very important that we've had balanced budgets and we should have balanced budgets going forward so that when the new middle high school comes online, we should have a smooth transition with the anticipated additional costs of electricity, et cetera. That's really all I had to say. I'd like to turn it over to Peter and Felicia now to provide any more information.
I want to thank Mike and Paul Haggerty for all of the work that they did on this with Felicia. And I want to thank the people at the Town Hall, the Town Manager, and the Assistant Town Manager, Rick Lefon, and Dorie Jameson, and then the Treasurer Collector, Leo Provost, the Assessor, Jack Mr. Minow, and then Sumo Kwan, the Treasurer, sorry, the Town Accountant, for collaborating with us. And so what you have in your packet is that major increase page that people have seen a number of times. You'll see that in the Increase in Major category, we have the amount needed for salary increase offset by the retirements to provide for our contractual obligations, for a difference there of $548,250. Programs of the districts seeing a reduction of $145,162 based on, that's a 68% reimbursement of circuit breaker and a decrease in tuition programs. We have the athletics zeroed as they have been in previous year with the hope that perhaps next year, we can provide some relief to the sports and the music boosters once we get underway. Because we still, there are unknowns in the budget until, in the latest, you can make those commitments, the better position you're in. Other school services, you'll see the transportation contract, which Felicia's going to ask you about in a moment. Transportation offset, there's a slight decrease there. Special education transportation, the late bus has been removed. There's an escalation for electricity that's based on the agreement that the town has with the electric provider. We know what that increase will be for the town of Abington, which includes the school department, for an increase of $54,128. And then a commitment that we've made to replenishing our textbook. There are other, there's other textbook line items in the budget, but this is particular, of particular interest in terms of math. And then this, this course, it's better described as a tuition or a tuition cost. It says reimbursement, but that's, we've talked about that. Those are for our students that require online credit recovery, saving us, hopefully, some students that aren't able to complete their high school experience another way. They've come this far and for, with a little additional help, they'll be able to get a high school diploma. For an increase in that area under instruction of $99,382 for a total proposed increase of just over half a million dollars, $556,598 for the proposed preliminary budget number of $20,801,023, which is a 2.75% increase. So what we need to do is we need to request a vote of that number. That could, you know, as a committee, we meet prior to town meeting and we stay in session at town meeting should things change. At town meeting, a vote could be taken. That's the recommended number from the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. And additional to that in your packet, you've got staffing requests because we don't know necessarily how things are going to work out in a budget. I felt it was responsible to provide those to you in some semblance of a priority order. We are hoping, as you know, to reduce our elementary class sizes. We talked about a fourth grade position. This is a first grade position in this sheet. Simply, the reason we talked about a fourth grade position is because we're moving people around. But I can, if we were able to add a first grade teacher, I could tell you that that would keep our grade one numbers to 25, grade two would be at 21, grade three would be at 20, grade four, again, without moving people, some of the moves we have to make internally would be at 25, and then grade five and six would be at 29 and 31. So the addition of this first grade teacher would help make those, the numbers that I just described possible. We talked a little bit tonight earlier about the need for math and math program at our secondary level. Abington High School art, we did have a retirement in the art department and this would be, that person was a .6, this would be the addition of a .4, which would make that a full-time position for, hopefully, we have the same amount of money. And after that, a grades five and a grade six teacher again. Not knowing where the budget's going to land, I thought it was important just to lay these out for people so that we always keep our eye on the prize and on the ball in terms of what we want to do as a district. So what I'd be asking for is any questions people might have? And then when people are comfortable, I'd be requesting a motion to submit for the FY ' '16 school department budget, a figure of $20,801,023.
I have no questions.
I have one question. The transportation decrease, why have we...
So that is the amount of money that we collect from bus fees and we have seen a decrease in the number of, in the amount of money that we collect and for bus fees. And we look at it over a number of years, not just one year. And over the last three or four years, we have seen a steady decrease. Part of that, it's not because fewer students are being transported, part of it is the number of students that qualify for a bus waiver and also when we redistricted and moved our grades around and center school opened and it mandated more students for transportation.
Kathy?
No.
So we'd be looking for a motion to submit FY 2016 school department budget figure of $20,801,023 and no sense.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Thank you.
My last item is the First Student Bus Contract for the FY '16 school year. We are entering into the fifth year of possible contract with First Student. In the state of Massachusetts, you can do a three-year transportation agreement with two additional option years that you vote the year four and the year five as a school committee to extend the bus contract. We have, I have been able to negotiate with First Student for next year, a 2.5% increase on a regular transportation bus contract. That is included in the budget, that increase. I should let you know that in the fall, we'll be going out to competitively bid our bus contract again. And historically, there is a somewhat significant increase in a new bus contract. So more than 2.5%, 5%, 7%, some people see 10% increase when they go out with a new bus contract. So that will be, if you agree to extend the contract for a fifth year, we will be going out for a competitive bid for transportation, student transportation in the fall. We have the last two bus contracts collaboratively bid with Whitman Hansen and that increases kind of our buying power. Whitman Hansen runs about 30 buses. We run about 12, 13 buses when we include the kindergarten. So it is more advantageous for companies to want to bid on someone like Abington. When we collaborate with Whitman Hansen, it gets more buses in the area. So that, I think, has been beneficial for us to provide a competitive environment. This is for next year, FY '16. It's the fifth year of the five-year, fifth-year option. It's the last year that we can do that. I would recommend that you vote to extend that contract by the fifth year.
Do we know, going forward beyond that, if it's greater than 2.5%? Do we know roughly what an impact per percentage point addition would be cost-wise, dollar-wise?
I, in some of my preliminary estimations going forward, I have been playing with the number of a 10% increase for FY '17 in the budget as we've done our projections. There are, like I said, there are districts that are seeing significant increases and there are other districts that are seeing moderate increases. It used to be kind of automatic that you saw very, very large increases in bus contracts, but over the last few years, I've heard really all over the place. And I think it's really about how competitive your area is.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's hope it's very competitive.
So motion, looking for a motion to extend the First Student Contract for a fifth year as presented.
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
On paper.
So under informational, got the correspondence from Paul Haggerty, fiscal report, and then the Secretary Summer School flyer, and then personnel information. I'm certainly answering any questions you and I have, but nothing that I need to direct your attention to.
So under new business and establishing of an ex-school committee, meeting date on June 8th in the high school library at 6:30 prior to the town meeting. And then our regular school committee meeting will be on Tuesday, June 16th here at 7:00 And we're going to go into executive session, about to return to session.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks again, Sam.
Wrong, thank you guys.
This is the last one.
Huh?
I'll give it.